Let me do a check on our council. Okay, good, we've got a majority here. And staff, how are we doing on reflecting the red lines? To show on video here before we conduct a vote?
Mr. Mayor, we're ready to show the red lines and I apologize, I can't turn my video on just yet, but I do believe I might be able to share my screen.
Okay, well, let me see if I can help you out here.
Yeah, my video is about tomorrow.
Oh, there you go. All right, great. So, before we do that, let me see, is Vice Mayor Chow back? Vice Mayor Chow, I wasn't...
I'm here.
Oh, great. So, I wasn't sure if you had stated the very end of that, that the proposed actions are exempt from CEQA in your motion? Did you?
No, I didn't say that.
Okay, would you be willing to add that to your motion?
Yeah.
Okay, and then Councilmember Moore, would you be willing to second that addition?
Yes, second.
Okay, great. All right, so Pew, you have the floor now to present to us the red line changes from the staff report, from the staff recommendation. Or the draft ordinance, I should say.
I'll go through them in the order that they appear in the ordinance for each. The first one is the typo that I mentioned with regard to in section nineteen, one oh two, zero, four, zero, B to A, which is the zero point one foot candle. The next one is in that same section, that subsection D, where I believe the motion said that there should be no minimums as far as the horizontal maintained illumination goes, but we retained the maximum. With the next change is in the numbering in the string lighting section. That was a typo in the ordinance. Following that, there was the the change in chapter nineteen, one, two, four with regard to the white light, which was a recommendation from the Audubon Society and we conformed that to what's existing in nineteen point one oh two, which is the three thousand Kelvin or less. And finally, I think that was it.
Okay, great. Thank you for that, Pew. I was actually wondering about that for the zero point five because there were the two components of that, right? Changing it from one to point five as well as eliminating minimums. So, so that does answer that particular one, the second change you made by just eliminating that the one foot candle number. Vice Mayor Chow, does that comport with your understanding of the motion that you placed on the table?
How about the retail storefront?
So, you had stated, Vice Mayor Chow, that you were looking at, right, a change from commercial areas to specifying retail storefront areas.
Yeah.
Did we capture that as well?
My apologies, we did capture that as well.
Okay.
Right there.
All right, so paginated page fifty-three, it looks like, was on your screen a moment ago?
Yes.
All right. All right, Vice Mayor Chow, anything else? Does that reflect your understanding of your motion?
Was there the uniform lighting also?
No, that was not changed.
So, that's not changed, okay.
And, Councilmember Moore, you're second?
Yes, I seconded.
Yeah, yeah, no, does that reflect your understanding?
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay, great. So, we have that motion on the table, the red lines have been presented to us in the public. There are no more hands raised. Councilmember Way, you do have your hand raised.
So, sorry, one more, it went too fast, one more clarification. From the Audubon Society suggestion, they want to remove a section. Was that removed or was that updated? The table nineteen point one two four point four zero, regulations for off-street parking. The exterior light color?
That was updated.
That was updated, okay, thank you.
Great. We have Councilmember Moore with her hand up as well.
Yes, thank you. I don't recall if I heard the language about the one-year check-in, which was part of the the motion. Did we hear that?
That will be reflected in the meeting minutes and we will bring it back for a one-year check-in.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thanks for that confirmation and, yes, that that should be in the motion as well with direction staff explicitly stated in that motion. Okay, so it looks like we are ready to proceed with a a vote on this consolidated ordinance. Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the first reading of this ordinance.
This is the first reading of ordinance number two one dash two 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 five, as amended, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino, amending city code to add nineteen point one zero two glass and lighting standards and to amend chapter nineteen point four zero residential hillside RHS zones, chapter nineteen point six zero general commercial GC zones, chapter nineteen point seven two light industrial ML and industrial park MP zones and chapter nineteen point one two four parking regulations to implement bird safe and dark sky policies.
And as amended, correct?
Yes, I actually mentioned that in the beginning section, but yeah.
Okay, oh, I apologize.
I can add it at the end.
No, 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 that's fine. If you added it and I wasn't paying attention, then then you're you're right, I'm I'm off. So, let us go ahead and conduct it. Thanks.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, congratulations to everyone, that's quite a milestone and I can't even say anyone took the laboring or our entire community seemed to be getting involved in this, so to a very good effect. Thank you very much, everyone. Let's go on to item number fifteen, which is under ordinances and action items. This is an action item, a resolution to consider adopting this resolution affirming the city's commitment to stand in solidarity with the Asian and Pacific Islander community. And Katie Namara from our staff has been working on putting together this draft ordinance. I apologize, this draft resolution, rather. And so, welcome, and would you like to present the draft to us in the public?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. Katie Namara, Assistant to the City Manager. At the last council meeting, council expressed interest in bringing forward a resolution to stand in solidarity with the Asian and Pacific Islander community. And what you have before you today is a resolution to that effect. And we welcome any comments or questions.
Okay, great. So, are there any questions of of staff? We do have the resolution. It is exhibit A attached to the staff report and item here. Would anyone care to ask any questions before we open it up for public commentary? Okay, well, seeing no questions from council, I will go ahead and open it up to the public. There is one hand raised and just to remind everyone, by the time the first speaker gets done, you'll need to have your hand raised in order to be included in the public comments. And the hand raised is from Connie Cunningham, welcome Connie.
Okay, well, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and City Council. I just wanted to say how how pleased I am to see this resolution before the council and that I wanted to express again how I feel about it. On March second, I know I I spoke up and said that I wanted to join with other voices to publicly condemn the recent hate crime attacks against Asians in the Bay Area. And I wanted to, excuse me, state publicly my support for the Asian community and to raise awareness of these crimes. And I was so happy to see the rally in San Jose with all our, with with many leaders and with having that awareness raised. So, thank you again for bringing this to the council. And I guess that's all I really can say. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. I don't see any other hands raised and so I'll bring it back to council in order to entertain a motion so that we can conduct further discussion on the item. Is there anyone who would like to bring a motion forward?
I'd like to make the motion to adopt a resolution affirming the city's commitment to, adopt resolution number twenty-one dash zero zero two, affirming the city's commitment to stand in solidarity with Asian and Pacific Islander community. But I do want to add, modify one paragraph in the resolution by striking the fifth whereas. I'll share my screen. Yeah, so I'd like to strike that paragraph since I think it doesn't add anything to the resolution but adds the leading to the community which we don't really need right now. And I'm hoping to add this paragraph, but I'm a little so, let me read that. So, as a community, we shall all stand against racism, prejudice and hate crimes against any member of our community as it runs counter to our shared democratic values. And as such, behavior against one diminishes all of us.
Great. Well, Vice Mayor Chow, I would be proud to second that. You know, you actually identified the the one recital I really had a bit of a problem with. Not because I don't think it's important to point out, I just don't want to give quarter to this language in the permanent resolution we set forth. And, you know, I I think your your language captures it quite quite well, actually, with regard to how we have shared values that we're trying to promulgate. And also, you know, I really like how it brings it out to a larger community, in fact, the entirety of our society, in that degradation of one really is degradation of all and that's that's consistent with our democratic core values. So, again, I'll proudly second that. Are there any councilmembers that would care to discuss the motion on the table? Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, I'll just say that I'm very supportive of this. I mean, we we regularly see lately, you know, in the last six months, more so, that, you know, Asians are targeted. Just in the last week, I read two different ones. Asian man dies after being assaulted and robbed in Oakland. Another one, Asian gas station owner assaulted and pepper sprayed. I, if if we don't stand up and clearly indicate that this is wrong, then more or less the the individuals are left to just fend for themselves and nobody is really contributing to the to their voice of it's wrong. It's wrong. And so, I'm very supportive of this. It it shows that our community is is willing to stand up. And if we did see something like what I just read, we should try to stand up and if it's violent or or battery of some type, get the police, you know, get the police involved and make sure that we communicate it's wrong. So, good, let's let's move on this motion. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilmember Willie. Councilmember Moore?
I would like this resolution read in its entirety with the Vice Mayor's edits. I think it's important that we all hear it. And I know I know I've read it and and it, you know, it made me really sad. And I think it's it's a it's a document that needs to be read.
Okay. Would anyone like to volunteer to read? I'd be I'd be happy to read it. Would anyone else like to put that forward? I see Councilmember Way does have her hand up. Did you want to make some comments before we?
Yes, I just want to make one comment. We are a very united community because I want to thank Connie Cunningham for spoke twice in public comment in support and in solidarity with Asian Americans against hate crimes. So, I just want to say I'm very proud of being a Cupertinoan and we're very pleased if Mayor Paul can read the resolution.
Yes, I'd be I'd be very happy to do that. Okay, so let me go to this. All right, and with thanks again from from Katie to Katie for putting this together. You know, before I do this, I'll I'll just indicate that, you know, we are a very ethnically diverse community and, you know, we have a high percentage of Asian Americans. And in fact, it's it's a majority Asian American community. We're not immune to, you know, this kind of sentiment. But I think, you know, to the extent that we can take a stand that is, you know, good for the entirety of our society, that's what we should be doing. I I know that there are a lot of, there are a lot of incidents happening. There were incidents happening, in fact, in Cupertino very early on. I think as early as March or or April of last year. But I I think instead of putting the focus upon the the actual incidents, you know, the statement of shared values is is really appreciated. And I also want to, on behalf of our council, just thank the members of the public that wrote in as well to support this resolution. It was unanimous support. There was nothing negative that was received by by us or or myself individually. So, this is a resolution of the Cupertino City Council affirming the city's commitment to stand in solidarity with the Asian and Pacific Islander community. Whereas, the Asian Pacific Policy and Planning Council and Chinese for Affirmative Action launched a hate incident reporting internet website titled Stop Asian American and Pacific Islander or AAPI Hate at the beginning of the COVID-19 outbreak in March of 2020. And whereas, the Stop AAPI Hate Reporting Center documented over two thousand eight hundred hate incidents against the Asian and Pacific Islander community in 2020. And whereas, over seven hundred of these incidents occurred in the Bay Area of California. And whereas, racism against the Asian and Pacific Islander community has been exacerbated by the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, as a community, we should all stand against racism, prejudice and hate crimes against any member of our community as this runs counter to our shared democratic values. And as such behavior against one diminishes all of us. And whereas, on January thirty, two thousand twenty-one, eighty-four-year-old Vicha Rantanapakki, a nearly blind and gentle elderly Thai man, died from injuries resulting from an attack while he was walking in the city of San Francisco in what is deemed as a hate crime. And whereas, on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one, three elderly Asian Americans were assaulted in the city of Oakland's Chinatown district, including a ninety-one-year-old Asian man who sustained serious injuries such as lacerations, abrasions and a contusion to the left thumb in what is deemed a hate crime. And whereas, about thirty-one percent of Asian Americans report having been subject to discrimination since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic, according to a Pew Research Center report. And whereas, Cupertino is blessed to be a multiracial community and we decided long ago that mutual understanding and respect develops a much healthier, safer and caring community. And whereas, it is important to acknowledge that the Asian and Pacific Islander community is made up of people from various socioeconomic backgrounds and many face significant financial struggles. And whereas, in Santa Clara County, one of the first minority-majority counties in the nation, Asians have been the largest racial group since two thousand fourteen and currently Asians make up nearly thirty-eight percent of the county's population. And whereas, in the city of Cupertino, Asians make up sixty-four percent of the city's population. Whereas, it is important for the community as a whole to stand in solidarity with the Asian and Pacific Islander communities across the country. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the city council does hereby affirm its commitment to stand in solidarity with the Asian and Pacific Islander community and resolves as follows. One, the city of Cupertino denounces hate crimes, hateful rhetoric and hateful acts and does not tolerate discrimination, xenophobia or harassment. And two, the city of Cupertino will oppose any attempts to undermine the safety, security and rights of members of our community and will work proactively to ensure the rights and privileges of everyone in the city, regardless of race. And three, the city of Cupertino will promote safety, a sense of security and equal protection of constitutional and human rights, leading by example through equitable treatment of all by city officials and departments. And four, the city of Cupertino encourages the community to stand together in affirming its commitment to the safety and well-being of the Asian and Pacific Islander community in Cupertino, California and our country. Passed and adopted at a special meeting of the city council of the city of Cupertino, the sixteenth day of March, two thousand twenty-one, by the following vote. I would say, I would say we should make that a regular meeting because this is a regular meeting.
We will make that correction.
Okay, great. So, I believe I need to confirm that with Vice Mayor Chow. We'll just make that correction from special to regular. Do you accept that change?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Chow, I'll accept this.
Great. Thank you for reading the resolution. I do have a statement to make.
Please, Vice Mayor Chow, and I thank Councilmember Moore for suggesting it.
Yeah, so yeah, I prepared a statement because I'm very concerned with the way things are going in our country. So, I read it. Hate crimes against Asian Americans or against anyone such as LGBTQ community should not be tolerated. Any stereotyping or scapegoating against any group should not be tolerated, period. The moment we allow any group to be scapegoated for any reason, we are fostering hatred in our society. And such hatred invariably will be taken out on the most vulnerable in our community, the seniors who happen to live within the same community as those who hold hatred towards others. The data shared by District Attorney Jeff Rosen at the March eleventh Cities Association shows the overall hate crime numbers has quadrupled in 2020. Out of nineteen cases, four were against Asians. The rest were against blacks, Muslim, LGBTQs and others. Four out of fourteen is twenty-eight percent, which is smaller than the Asian population in Santa Clara County. That's thirty-seven percent. So, I'm much more concerned about the increase of overall hate crimes against all vulnerable communities. To stop hate crimes against anyone, we must simply stop hate against anyone, period. In past years, there is a trend to view every issue through racial lens. As a result, we are more divided than ever. I'm concerned such practice would actually mask the real issue to be resolved, which might be the lack of mental health or the lack of community engagement. I'm very concerned with such trends since we are seeing them even entering K-212 classrooms. We must look beyond races and beyond privilege versus victimhood. I hope that we find ways to uplift each other rather than put each other down. I hope that we stop scapegoating or stereotyping any group. I hope that together we stand up to object to cancel culture, which is a form of hate crime too. Effectively, cancel culture advocates for the mindset. If you are not with us, you are against us and you are the problem, you are canceled. We should stop cancel culture that has permitted even or even advocated for ruining one's reputation or career. For one thing, a person has said or perceived to be wrong or or have said recently or even thirty years ago or even two hundred years ago. Let's all be more compassionate and forgiving towards each other. Let's see good in each other rather than picking out the worst. We can reduce the overall hatred in this society. Then, we can stop AAPI hate. Some division, diversity, inclusion training is teaching the idea that if you disagree with our idea, you are racist. That's not diversity or inclusion, that's indoctrination. The United States as a democratic country should not police people on their thoughts. I hope that to get, together, we object to any form of indoctrination since they further divide us and will breed hatred. I'm afraid that the rise in hate crimes in 2020 is a manifestation of such hatred culture. That's just saying no. To stop AAPI hate, we need to stop hatred all around. Let's stop labeling people. Let's stop divide people by races or anything else. Let's tolerate diverse views and have civil discussions rather than shutting each other down. I would say it's not enough to be anti-racist. We need to be anti-racist with respect and compassion for everyone and their diverse views. Therefore, I hope Cupertino's resolution is one which shows respect and compassion rather than promoting more division and hatred. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Does anyone have any further comments before we call for a vote for the resolution and motion on the table? Okay, well, I think that we are doing good thing going forward. And it does sound to me like we have, you know, full support for for this. I know that viewpoints and perspectives vary all across the board. There are many, many layers of nuance to these discussions. But I'm I'm really glad to see that we do seem to have a common sentiment with regard to speaking out against just obvious ignorance and brutality against against any members of our society. So, thanks very much. And Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, we are now on to item number sixteen on our agenda. This is also under ordinances and action items. This is our 2020 General Plan Annual Report, which includes the General Plan Annual Housing Element Progress Report. And we do have members of our of our planning department here. Madam City, City Manager, I'm not certain who will be providing the staff report, so I'll hand it over to you to make that introduction.
I'm going to hand it directly over to Pew and Carrie Huesler.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This is Pew Koosh, Planning Manager. I'll start the presentation off and then I will hand it over to Carrie Huesler. There are two parts to this presentation. The first part deals with the General Plan Annual Review, which is pertains to the policies and strategies within the general plan and pretty much covers all the general plan policies the city has. However, there's a second part to it which pertains to the Housing Element Annual Review, which is prepared on forms that the HCD requires the city to report on. With that, are you able to see my screen?
Yes.
As I just went through, the General Plan Annual Update is required by state law. It has to be done on an annual basis and has to be reported to the legislative body by April first of each year. As I mentioned, there are two parts. And just jumping right into it, the general plan is comprises of several mandatory elements that are required by state law. They include NDU, circulation, housing, conservation, open space, health and safety. And then there are new requirements for environmental justice which we don't yet have policies on. There are optional elements as well that a city can adopt and in our case, we have one optional element, which is the infrastructure element. If one were to ask why does the city need to prepare an annual report? In general, it could be utilized to identify work program items based on action items in the general plan and also to ensure appropriate funding is made available for these action items, but also because it's required by state law. Uh, but also because it's required by state law for us to report on progress, uh, on these, um, different action items. Um, the 2020 Annual Report was reviewed by the Planning Commission over three meetings in 2019 and 2020. Um, as you may recall, there was an extensive review of the Annual Report in, in the prior year. Um, there were no changes to the past format. Um, the green, uh, items on the report in Attachment A indicate action items that the city has already acted upon. The yellow items are currently in progress. Orange are identified as action items, but no action has been initiated. And the gray includes ongoing implementation of policies and strategies through our municipal code, our, our daily activities as staff or existing city programs. Um, in the report, there's a timeframe identified, um, there's long range, intermediate, et cetera, for these policies and strategies. Um, and the updates for 2020 have been identified in bold text in the report in the far right-hand side column. Um, with that, I just wanted to highlight a few, uh, suggestions from the Planning Commission. Um, they did identify that possibly the city might want to look into adding generic pandemic policies related to employee density in common areas, but not necessarily COVID-specific policies. Um, they also, um, requested that the council, uh, consider requiring ground flow or retail along Valco Parkway at the Valco Special Area, uh, with, um, Commissioner Fung at the time voting no. Um, they also, uh, requested that the council reevaluate the mix of uses in the Northians, Asaltians, and the Bub Road Special Areas um, in lieu of the, um, the RENA numbers that the city would have to accommodate. Um, they also wished for, um, uh, the City Council to consider amending LU 27.1 to specify, and I'm sorry, that's policy LU 27.1, to specify which massing and form would apply in the event of densification required by state law within the neighborhoods. Um, they also, uh, suggested revision of the LOS standards for consistency with the VMT thresholds that have recently been adopted by the city uh, and establishing, uh, consistent aesthetic standards for 5G infrastructure for all carriers. Um, just a brief, uh, update on the city's health as far as development allocation goes. There is, as you will know, plenty of commercial allocation available. Uh, as far as office allocation goes, um, there is a very minimal office allocation available citywide. But there is about, uh, a half a million, uh, five hundred and twenty-three thousand, uh, square feet, give or take, for major employers within the city. Um, there is a hundred and ninety-one hotel rooms available in the Valco Shopping District. And as far as residential allocation goes, there's four hundred and sixty-nine units available in different areas in the city. As of, uh, the, the, these numbers are as of December 31st, uh, 2020. With that, I will hand it over to Carrie, um, to go through her presentation.
Thank you. I will take the virtual baton from you, Pugh. So my name is Carrie Huesler. I'm the Housing Manager with the Community Development Team. Um, good evening, Mayor Paul and councilmembers. I am here tonight to present you with an overview of the city's progress in implementing our Housing Element and the 2020 Annual Housing Element Report. The report was submitted to HCD on March 10th, ahead of the April 1st deadline. This item will also go to the Planning Commission on March 23rd. Ahead of our discussion, I wanted to acknowledge, um, two errors that resulted from the Excel spreadsheet converting into PDF for the packet. They're, they're minor errors. They won't impact, um, our data with HCD. Um, first of all, the LEAP tab, L-E-A-P, did not upload. And so we've confirmed that the correct data went to HCD notifying them that we have our $310,000 allocation. And then second, um, thank you to Councilmember Wei. We saw the issue with the, um, Table B auto-populated data that went into the wrong, um, wrong category. So we'll make sure HCD corrects that on their end. Okay. Um, so just a background on the Housing Element. State law requires California cities to have an adopted General Plan with the Housing Element. We must adequately plan to meet existing and projected housing needs of people at all income levels. The Cupertino Housing Element covers 2014 to 2022. It was certified by HCD in February of 2015 and adopted by City Council on May 19th of 2015. Next slide. So in past years, the report focused on building permits issued for new housing units broken down by affordability level, the city's progress towards meeting its RENA numbers, and the city's progress towards implementing its Housing Element programs. The new report reflects changes to state legislation with significant reporting requirements. I will talk more specifically about each table of the Annual Report during the second half of this presentation. Um, to the RENA entitlement slide. Thank you, Pugh. Here is an overview of the city's RENA entitlements for 2014 to 2020. This information is also current on the city's housing website. In three of the four categories, we have far exceeded our RENA obligations. The city has entitled and produced 328 total units as counted towards our Annual Housing Element Progress Reports, which is our RENA production. The city has entitled 3,190 units which have not yet been produced. The only area that is yet to be fully entitled is moderate income. I would like to point out that many of the moderate units are ADUs. We expect to continue to see production of ADUs towards the balance of 106 units. Now I'd like to give you an overview of the RENA generation by developers for 2014 to 2020. For purposes of the Annual Housing Element Report, they require that we report only building permits issued. In the last seven years, developers have applied for and been issued the following building permits. Overall, in 2020, the city issued 20 building permits for net new units, which includes one single-family resident and 19 ADUs. You see that there is quite a lot of, quite a lot of housing that remains to be built. So now I'll give you an overview of the 2020 report. Next slide, please. Thank you. The 2020 report covers activity during January through December of 2020, the calendar year. Numbers are based on net new building permits issued, which adds housing to the RENA stock. Just a reminder that the report was submitted to HCD on March 10th, ahead of, ahead of deadline. Now I thought it would be helpful to outline each table. So Table A is housing development applications submitted. In Table A, the city reported one housing development application for the Batte Brothers property, which is nine units. Now we will go, um, to, um, wanted to highlight some applications in review that don't show up on this report. The Planning Department is currently processing one application that was submitted in 2018. Canyon Crossing has not yet been deemed complete. The environmental review is underway. The application was submitted in September of 2018. Now we'll move on to Table A2, which is Annual Building Activity Report Summary, which is new construction, entitled permits, and completed units. And this is the bulk of the data. It requires information for very low, low, moderate, and above moderate income housing and for mixed income projects. I also think it's worth pointing out that extremely low-income units are captured in the very low-income category. HCD doesn't differentiate between the two. Um, this is data on net new housing units and developments that have received an entitlement, a building permit, or a certificate of occupancy or other form of readiness. So Table B is auto-populated. This is a summer, summary of prior permitting activity in the current planning cycle, including activity for this year. Table C is sites identified or rezoned to accommodate our shortfall housing need. This is not applicable to Cupertino. We have more than sufficient site zone to accommodate our RENA numbers. So Table D, Program Implementation Status. This is a status and program of Housing Element Program and Policy Implementation for all programs described in the Housing Element. Cupertino is currently implementing all 26 programs and policies in the Housing Element. The Planning Commission reviewed the General Plan to prepare for this Annual Report in October 2020, November 2020, and January 2021. So Table E, Commercial Development Bonus Approved. This is required if a jurisdiction has approved any, um, during the reporting year. This is not applicable to Cupertino at this time. And then Table F, Units Rehabilitated, Preserved, and Acquired for Alternate Adequate Sites. Projects must be mentioned in the Housing Element as a program site to be listed. I wanted to highlight that this is not applicable to Cupertino. But we have gone above and beyond the Housing Element goals and provided, um, almost one and a half million dollars in loans and grants for rehabilitation projects from 2014 to 2020, of which we've spent dollars recently at West Valley Community Services Vista Village renovation project. And there is a project application headed to council on April 6th with recommendation for Housing Commission for more dollars towards that project. And then Table G is a new slide. It is a, um, it's a new tab. It's locally owned lands included in the Housing Element sites inventory. This is not applicable to Cupertino. And that is the, um, end of the presentation. And I will just highlight if, if any of these updates we mentioned at the beginning are, um, are necessary to clean up our end, we have time to submit to HCD with no penalty. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Pugh. And I do have a hand up from Councilmember Moore for questions.
Sure. Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Um, I was wondering if you could pull up Table A2. Uh, my concern is that entitled units are included. And at the start of the evening, uh, we began with Supervisor Semidion discussing, uh, a potential project at the Outback Site. And in that, uh, discussion, I, I talked about the RENA entitlements which we have. And Westport, I don't think was, um, mentioned here. So, uh, a couple of things. I would like to see the RENA entitlements, um, by the city, uh, table updated um, so that we can see how many, you know, the grand total that's been entitled. Uh, but also, and, and I want to go back to that table after we look at this. Um, so, yeah, so you've got an entitlement column, five, entitlement date approved, number of units issued entitlements. So I, I'm gonna gather that we're gonna scroll down on this table and we'll, we'll catch all these, uh, no. Okay, you're muted. I'm still muted, Carrie.
Thank you to the hosts for helping. Um, so this is for just the previous year. And I, we captured Westport in a previous report to HCD.
Okay, then could we just go to the RENA entitlements by the City of Cupertino, um, table in the presentation then?
Sure.
Okay. Some of this is, is, uh, for community outreach and letting people know our whole story here. Uh, as opposed to what HCD necessarily needs for their documentation. But we need to be able to communicate what, what we've been doing here in the city and what's, what's approved, or I should say entitled. And, yeah, and what our, what our predicament is when, when, um, we have, people tell us that we are not, not doing our fair share essentially.
Yes, I'm pulling that up. Um, I have a few things open and it is... And this is exactly why Councilmember Moore, we put this information on our website, so that we have, um, we have a role in our story, an active role.
Carrie, if you'd like, I can share that slide, or do you have it?
I welcome your support. Did I get the RENA entitlements by city?
Yes.
Okay.
That's up. Okay, so what I'm interested in seeing the, the addition of is, of course, the Westport project. Um, because we get to, uh, the total projects entitled going from left to right. It's, it's the extremely low, very low. The total's now 406. Then the 847 is 866, still 32. And then we're at 2153 for a grand total of 3457. And then under the balance, I would like it if you could show that we are, um, above and beyond, uh, for, um, these, the categories which we are. So, uh, uh, some, somehow state that. You could put it in, in parentheses or, you know, however you would like, but so that, or, or maybe even use a different color. It could be, you know, red font, uh, something like that, so that it's pointed out that we've gone over on these items. Because I'm a little concerned that we, we have neighboring cities. If, that we have, like, doubled the number of very low and low-income units entitled and that the cities around us, um, don't, probably don't have that. I would be really surprised if we, if we looked at Mountain View and, and Sunnyvale and Campbell and Saratoga and if they have entitled more than twice as many units at that level than they were required to. Um, so perhaps that's something that, that we should, we should find out and, and research. It's a little comparative study. I was trying to pull some of that information up, um, quickly earlier tonight and I, I couldn't find it that, that quickly. But, um, I think this is a really great table. And, uh, you know, we need to maybe add a little bit more to it so that we can, um, even communicate even better. But thank you for it.
I, I agree. Thank you.
Uh, great. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Wei?
Yes, um, that, that I, I look at that, um, RENA allocation table and I was very interested. I had a big, a study on it because it looks like, like, um, we, the City of Cupertino being accused of, like, you're not for housing and this and that. So I looked at it very closely. The Valco SB 35 project, I look at it, it's, if I recall it correctly, the city did not entitle it. It was a SB 35 state law project. But we still include it because it's there. Is that the reason why it's there? Because I don't think the city entitled it. It's, it's a state law project that's, um, not really entitled by the city. Because I remember the General Plan Amendment 2019. Uh, isn't the entitlements up to 398 units instead of 2402? 2402 is SB 35 project. It's not how our General Plan Amendment entitled it.
I, I can help answer that. Anytime the city approves a planning project, that is considered an entitlement. So regardless of the process under which it was approved, it would, it's still considered an entitlement. Um, and we will only be able to account for those units when the building permits for those, uh, units are issued on the, uh, on the state side of things.
Okay, got it. Okay, I'm, I'm just curious because I, I knew our General Plan actually entitled 389 units in that, in the Valco projects. But because it's, even if it's not approved by the city, but it's there, so we are counting it. And eventually it will be built, it would count it toward our RENA allocation.
Uh, towards the RENA production.
Production, that's right. Okay, and probably not this RENA cycle, right? Because I was reading and I was got a little confused that, oh, this is the current RENA, it's like RENA cycle that ends 2022.
It is possible that those building permits will not be issued in this current RENA cycle.
Okay, okay. And then, um, the report actually concentrates on 2020. This is an yearly report, right?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Councilmember Wei. Any other questions of the staff for their presentations at this point? I don't see any hands raised. And so, uh, if I don't, I'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Um, are there any members of the public that would wish to, uh, make comment on this item? I don't see any hands raised there either. Peggy Griffin, uh, has her hand up. And I'll just remind the other members of the public, uh, present that once Peggy gets done, you'll need to have your hand raised in order to be called. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, uh, councilmembers and staff. Um, I found the material presented really interesting. It was good to see an overview with the details of the numbers and that apparently the ADU stuff is working. There's quite a few ADUs being approved. I had two questions. One on page 11 of 93, under Economic Development. It's row two. It says Economic Development Strategy Plan to ensure the city's long-term fiscal health and stability. And this was created and adopted in 2016, and it's periodically updated. My concern is about the loss of retail. It's becoming critically low, both because of the pandemic and because of the need for housing. Is there any plan to preserve the retail? You know, the zoned, commercial, mixed use, so it could be just anything. Are there key areas where we want to keep our retail due to visibility, due to traffic, due to whatever? Are there key areas where we want to keep our retail due to visibility, due to traffic, due to whatever? That we can preserve that? And the other thing that's come up is apparently West Valley and Rotary are working on identifying sites for affordable housing. Is the city involved in this? It seems like they should be and they should work together to direct that. Those are the two concerns I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Our next speaker is Connie Cunningham. And Connie, you'll be our last speaker on this item as well. Welcome.
Good evening, Mayor and Vice Mayor and council members. I guess I have a question in regards to the comments about entitlement versus built, including projects that I understand cannot be built because of zoning. And that is, excuse me, I'm referring to the Hamptons and I'm referring to the Marina. For projects that have been around that long that have not been built, I think that we should concern ourselves with what are the reasons that they're not being built? I don't think it's just obstinacy or anything like that, or trying to, to do some, something bad to the city. I am concerned that we are using this as a perhaps an idea that we don't need to further build houses or further entitle. Because if they are never going to be able to build, and it appears they are not, then we should in fact entitle other areas so that they can go forward and build. If in fact zoning is believed by the city council at this point to allow for feasible projects that pencil out. So I'm just very concerned that although the state is getting a report saying that we've done all this good entitlement, that in fact, we aren't going to be able to ever see housing come out of them, except for the SB 35 and the most current one, the Westport. I believe those two will move forward. But, but the other ones that have been around so long without being built, I think we need to really think about how to move past them. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie. And we'll bring it back up to council at this point. This is not, this is a report and so we can provide direction. But we're not being asked to pass a resolution or an ordinance at this point. And so I'm, I'm open to the idea of having some discussion first. We can pass a motion if that's the pleasure of council. But Councilmember Moore, you have your hand raised.
Well, not to, not to make a motion on this item. It's just to request that we have a comparison table showing our entitled very low and low income housing and compare that with our surrounding neighbor cities. I want to know how many units that they have entitled and built and so forth. Also, we have a RENA number of looking like 4,558. And that would mean that we need to supply 1,869 very low and low income units. That's 1,121 very low income and 748 low income units in, in our next cycle. And if we're looking at a, at a cost of 500,000 apiece, say, for those units, this is, this is hugely, hugely expensive and, and quite problematic. So we will be allocating a lot of housing moving forward because our RENA number is so big. And because it's so expensive to, to build these things, I, I question whether or not this is attainable. And with regards to the Hamptons, they had, I believe, a 10% affordable requirement. And they appear to be bulking at that when it's less than the 15% our general plan has. So that, that, that one is particularly surprising that they're not moving forward with that. And then the other one that was mentioned was Marina. Marina ran into problems with their financing where they were using a regional, an EB5 regional center to provide financing, which got stopped because of, they essentially extorted the money from the, from the investors. And that's, that was part of the problem there. And then there was some easement issues with that, which still need to be straightened out. So there are some other, you know, side issues with these projects for why they haven't moved, moved forward that are, are, need to be discussed. Okay, thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Our next comments are from Councilmember Willie.
Yeah. I'm, I'm very sympathetic, so to speak, to our residents that don't understand why, in this case, two significant projects are not being built. And so I think that puts the impetus on us to somehow put out there the reasonings behind it so that the community does know. Councilman Moore just kind of explained the Marina. Now Mayor Sharp, when he was mayor, he met with the owner of the Hamptons. And the owner of the Hamptons said that it was clearly strictly a financial decision. He would have to demolish 300 and then build the 900. And the cost for construction had gone up. And at the present time, he didn't feel it was sufficiently advantageous to do that. Well, how do we get this out to the community and out to the Valley and Sacramento so that they truly know it's, it's not something that we're hindering? But I would also like to go into one more aspect. And that is our permitting or entitlement process. We, we saw the problem that it's been at a 10-year entitlement. And that gives the developer or the owner 10 years to sit on his project. And so I think we, you know, would be very wise to reduce that to something along the lines of like four years. But to even break it down into that, once he gets his entitlement, he has two years to start the real process of getting his permits. And the permits have to be issued within four years. If that was the case for both those projects, I think we would see them moving ahead. In the case of the Hamptons, if, if he felt that he was going to lose that 10% requirement and then have to increase it to a 15% requirement, I think he'd be much more interested in making it happen. And the same thing with Marina. Now all this verbiage that I've put out, you know, it's, it's verbiage. And somehow I think we as a city need to put this in a formal context. When, when somebody actually meets with the developer, whether it's the Hamptons or the Marina, we should document that. We don't want to prevent them from talking to us. But we definitely want to be sharing what we need, what we learn correctly and completely with the community. Because when, when we have the community, you know, wondering why, why is this not happening? And possibly Sacramento, it, it's not good. It's, it's really not good. And so somehow we, I think we, the council should be figuring out with staff how, how to address that, that communication void. So I'll leave it at that.
Thanks, Councilmember Willie. We have a hand raised from Councilmember Way. I noticed our city manager has her hand raised. Did you want to respond to something that Councilmember Willie has said, Deb?
I was just, I was just trying to fill in some information. You know, more recently, the Marina folks have been, I'll call it plagued with a series of unfortunate events that I think has affected their financial capability to start building. So I think that too is also a financial consideration there. I, I think overall, the way to message this is to tell community members, we can entitle it. You've seen it. We've entitled how many units? Councilmember Moore has it off the tip of her, tip of her tongue. But we've entitled a lot. We don't control the building. And that's, and that's the issue. And, and perhaps, you know, there's other ways to incentivize it. But I think right now, we also are seeing a lot of uncertainty due to the economic impacts. I mean, currently, obviously not before the pandemic from the start of 2020.
Hey, great. Thanks, thanks, Deb. Our next comments are from Councilmember Way.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay. So I have a question for Carrie. Cause I'm sorry, I apologize. I emailed late about that 1980 unit. But I never got whether it's moderate or, because on page two, it says moderate and page three, it says above moderate. Is it moderate or above moderate when we calculate?
Sure. Thank you for the question. So the Table A2 report on the 19 units as moderate is correct. Table A2 is auto-populated by HCD. We don't control the data. And we, we think when we transferred it to PDF for the packet, it lost some of its data. So we will confirm that HCD has the correct information and ask them to update their table. So it is 19 moderate units.
Got it. Thank you, Carrie. And then Mayor Pro, I have one comment. I understand our next RENA allocation is huge and I, I want to add on to Councilmember Moore's comments that it's really a tough job for us to do. And also add on to Councilmember Willie's, we can allocate and, but they're not building it. But the danger we, we're facing is if we don't issue enough building permits and then the builder can use SB 35 to build something that doesn't go through council. So what I think we need to get together and brainstorm within us, with our staff, with our community members, how can we like Deb said, city manager said, incentivize, incentivize builders to build so that we don't get into trouble with SB 35 or, you know, we, we should actually avoid, absolutely above, avoid another SB 35 project. So what can we do? I think that's what we need to brainstorm.
Okay. Let me give Vice Mayor Chow an opportunity to win. As Vice Mayor Chow, you haven't given comments yet.
Yeah. My comment has more to do with, with the, the annual, annual report. So there are some, let me share screen. I think I know to start from page six. Okay. So page six. This is where. So in our plan, we are, general plan says that we are planning to make a heart of the city, crossroads, Homestead Corridor and north-south Deansa Corridor, Montavista Village Plan. We have a lot of things, kind of, they haven't been updated for a while. And so I'm wondering what's our plan? And the update says, update North Deansa conceptual plan in the winter of 2021. So is that something we are proposing for the work program? And then should we, should the city make a plan to update Crossroads, Homestead and South-North Deansa, Montavista, and including Bob also? Do we, should we make a long-term plan for those? Or would that be, would we consider that as part of the housing element for, that needs to be completed by the end of 2020?
Pew, did you want to take a stab at answering that question?
Sure. The general plan policy talks about maintaining and updating the specific plans. It doesn't necessarily direct us to update the plans within a specific time period. We are maintaining the plans as they are. We're implementing them as they are written currently. With regard to updating the North Deansa conceptual plan, this is all part of the objective design standard project that is currently on the work program. I believe in consultation with the city attorney, we may not update the North Deansa conceptual plan, but may try to address it in another manner if there are gaps in terms of objective standards. So these are also as directed by the council. So when there are work program items that the council directs us to update a specific plan based on different, you know, work program items, we will, depending on our staffing levels and what the council directs.
So the current, the current list of objective standards we are considering won't update annual plans?
Correct. Though we are in the process of, we have currently on the work program, a mixed-use residential design guidelines project, which while may not directly impact these plans, but they would impact any projects that would be presented in these plan areas.
Okay. The general plan is like a 20-year plan, right? When we adopted it in 2015. And so the, of course, there is no time set for each of this. But shouldn't we have a long-term plan within this 20 years? We would like to get each of this done. So kind of, because then, then every, in the beginning of every year, if we don't have that list, we, this are never going to be something we think about, right? So I'm just wondering, shouldn't there be an implementation plan for the general plan that put down a list of things we should implement? It's a long-range implementation.
And that, that is the purpose of the work program discussion as well. For the, for, this is the reason why the annual report helps the council think about its priorities in terms of identifying work program items so that we can identify staffing to make those amendments. We are a very lean staff here at the planning department.
So, but then work program is kind of ad hoc. Every year, we are thinking about next year. And still there is no long-range plan. And then I don't see a staff recommendation from the annual report that recommends maybe this is what we should do next or in the next five years. So I'm wondering, is that something that people usually do?
We look to the council for direction in terms of its priorities in updating plans and work, identifying the work program items.
So you expect the council to read through the 93 pages to come up with priorities?
I think, I think I know what you're driving at, Vice Mayor. You know, so generally speaking, very general, a general plan for 20 years should be kind of updated every fifth year. It's kind of my experience. We've had a, I've had a general plan before, certainly not for an entire city, but a whole campus. And what I would also say is that council currently has some objective standards that we've bucketed, that we've talked about before. And many of those can be addressed either through these design standards that you just saw. I can't remember which council meeting. But also through this housing element update, we can also use that, that work effort to update some of the objective standards that council has asked for us to clarify. So we're going to use that process for that. So there's a lot of moving parts. Yes, ideally, we would have what you're driving at as a very orderly process. Or when we do updates and, and how it gets worked into the, that year or a two-year work program. So you can kind of see the progress being made like throughout the years towards that end goal. We just haven't gotten there yet, I don't think. But long-term planning is, is essential. It's just a matter of trying to make sure that we have the right priorities in any given year.
Okay. So for example, this one, so this one and the one below is about the street scale, that we would like it to be pedestrian scaled element, that it's, and porches along the street and like the. and like the multi-story buildings. If nearby residential district will now suffer from privacy intruding. So these are things that's not objective. So these are things that we are going to address in the objective standard review, right?
These are things that are uh that are potentially going to be addressed with the mixed-use development guidelines.
Okay, then then in case a project is streamlined for S B thirty five or whatever reason, then it will be more clear what we mean by this.
Correct.
Standards, right? This is the kind of thing we need to address. Okay, and then the next thing is uh, yeah, this is streetscape escape design. I don't see that included in the objective standard. So this is page seven. So it ensures tree planting, landscaping along streets, bejeweling has the streetscape and is consistent with the bejeweling of each planning area. So again, it's a nice um bejeweling, but then it's not very objective. Then how do we make that more ob- objective for each of these planning area that's specified? Um so.
Each of those plan areas have their own streetscape requirements. So those are implemented as and when projects come in for development.
Yeah, so a lot of these are just nice things that we listed, but without uh objective standard, they may or may not be implemented, right? And it's um a lot of, yeah. Okay, anyway, so the next thing is economical stability. So on page ten. Um here it is, okay. So we talk about um high sales tax producing retail and and it talks about that there has been multiple attempts to identify a location for Costco when has not been identified. I'm just curious, I don't, I didn't know there is multiple attempt to identify a location for.
I myself have tried to identify locations multiple times.
Oh, so it's us, not like other people representing Costco trying to identify?
We we do talk, I I have contact with Costco and um right now, you know, the the dialogue is uh calm because there's no location right now. Uh but I haven't given up. I have not given up. Um they need about six acres total for a traditional store. And it ideally would be close to a freeway tributary or close by so that doesn't create um traffic issues within the city. Um but yes, I've heard loud and clear since I've gotten here that a Costco would be loved in Cupertino. And so I will continue on my quest for finding a location.
So I think, for example, the the one about the yellow one, it says it's infrastructure and streetscape improvement. The the idea is we want to improve our streetscape near crossroads or South Valco so that it will be more attractive. Then we will get more rate, more sales and then improve our physical stability. So how would this kind of thing be implemented? It says implemented via C I P program. But at the discretion of the council. But the thing is, council never, unless we read through the ninety-one, ninety-three page documents, we are not ever going to be thinking about even this. So how the process should work? That something important will be should be popping up or maybe every year we'll have a list of things we know we should consider. If this is something we even want to do.
Or or conversely, you know, um we staff can find a process and then we we prompt council to consider certain things.
Yeah, it seems we need a process.
Prompt, because it's a lot of stuff, it's a lot of information, right?
Yeah, just too much things nice to do. We have a ton of nice policies that we seem to never get to implementing them.
Yes, there's a lot of, yes, I I agree.
So it's we are spending all this time hiring the consultant, coming up with nice policies that we don't implement.
Implement that we can, yeah, now we have to focus on implementation.
And this is one one, so this green one means it's complete. Okay, we have completed the Economic Development Strategy Plan. But then where is the implementation? I remember that plan has a lot of good ideas. But we, it seems every year, we also need kind of annual report.
Right, yeah.
Think about, okay, what we can do for the next five years. And they make a list that we can consider at the at least. I think council need to see a list in front of us so we can consider. Otherwise, every time the work program, which things just pop out on our head and without a system. So maybe you can.
Yeah, and typically what happens when the work program comes up is staff also puts on for council consideration those things we feel are uh the right thing to do in that year. Um for example, what came up tonight was the um like streetlights for dark sky, bird-safe dark sky. And it happens to be that they're going in, the streetlights are going into their tenth year of life, which is basically the end of their useful life. So now is the time to put us a proposal on the work program to tell council, hey, now's the time, maybe we should not only take it down from, take down the Kelvins down to twenty-seven hundred Kelvin, but let's start a program to replace all the streetlights because it'll take a while for us to do that too. So that that's in combination. But you know, we didn't unfortunately come prepared to talk about all of this. We're, we were trying to just get the reports uh reviewed by by council at this point.
So Vice Mayor Chow, I think we'll um, you know, we'll move on for um, you know, any additional comments. If uh if there's a desire by a majority of people to uh give uh direction in the form of a motion, I'd be happy uh to entertain that. I I thought the uh request to get a comparison table um vis a vis our localities uh here in the county was a good idea uh to see how we're doing uh compared to other uh cities in the county. I'd also be really interested in knowing how we compare um to other cities in the state as well. And so just just to clarify that, I think it should be a percentage of allocation, right? So you've got uh in the first column, the the Rena allocations broken down by uh the different allocation types from very low to above moderate uh to moderate. And then you um then take a look at what we've entitled and then you look at what we have been uh permitting. And so those are, those are respective percentages uh compared to the allocations. Um a- and then what's useful, I think, is to take a look at uh snapshots in time. And you know, we've looked at twenty twenty, twenty twenty is a weird year, though, obviously. I mean, I I kind of doubt that there's a ton of uh entitlements and and permits um either countywide or statewide. So I mean, it would be interesting to see how that compares, you know, to our neighboring cities, but also as a mean of cities uh across the state. Um because then that gives us numerical um uh data with regard to how we're actually performing. And then um in addition to uh having that current year uh in review, having the cumulative up to uh the end of the the previous calendar year. So if we're currently in the twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-two uh cycle, uh I'm sorry, is it twenty fourteen or twenty fifteen? It's twenty fourteen, right? Yeah, if we're in the twenty fourteen to twenty twenty-two year cycle, then we would see, you know, between twenty fourteen and twenty twenty, how we're doing cumulatively uh as a percentage of allocation. But then also, I I I think that gives you much better data because it's over a a period of a longer number of years uh compared to, you know, our neighboring cities in the county and uh overall in the state. I think what we'll find is that when it comes to entitlements, we should be pretty good. Um and you know, and I will point out that the entitlement process uh doesn't completely divest our uh locality of any kind of review authority. Um and ultimately, the authority does come from the public because um the public votes for council, council hires the city manager and ministerial review processes are undertaken um in large part by the employee staff uh that's directed by the city manager. So you know, ultimately, the buck does stop with the localities along with uh some rights that are retained explicitly uh within the legislation itself. So I mean, I I I'm comfortable with classifying it as entitlement. Um you you know, personally, I think we're doing really well percentage-wise compared to our uh allocation requirements. Um but of course, that doesn't really get at the whole idea of uh the nuance of the conversation we've had, right? I mean, I I I don't think we we should be um vilified for trying to uh very rightly point out some of the uh so some of the uh questionable downstream effects of uh these allocations. Um but at the same time, there is a disconnect between our our permitting and our entitlements. And you know, taking a look at uh at those, I think are um those disconnects that is, I I I think that's that's very legitimate, in fact. Um but but the starting point needs to be the data. How are we doing in comparison to our peer jurisdictions? Because because that can actually serve as a blueprint for outreach. Um so we can say possibly, look, look at this city it's doing. And this is by percentages, we shouldn't be looking at absolute numbers. Uh we we can say this city is doing relatively well, maybe we can outreach and figure out what they're doing. Um that's been helping. Um but but I think if this is ultimately going to be solved in a regional fashion, we should be keeping an eye on what we can be doing uh to communicate and to open up those mechanisms of communication. So if we were to start by um compiling that data, maybe other cities don't have that in the county. Um but but I think instead of kind of playing this cat and mouse game or, you know, trying to um trying to ultimately point the finger, I mean, you know, if we take affirmative actions to go ahead and try to uh evaluate this issue and reach out, um we could have, you know, broader-based um public uh meetings where uh we're basically trying to discuss best practices between jurisdictions. I think that could be quite constructive uh going forward. So um yeah, I mean, I, sorry.
Sorry, Ms. Mayor, um just a comment where, so this is what I ran into with some other data that we collected. Not all cities put the data like we do on our website. And so this ends up being a really time-consuming thing to do. Almost so time-consuming, it should be on the work program. So what I can promise is we could probably put together a couple of city comparisons and council can tell me which cities might be interesting to look at. But to compile like other cities in the state or the entire county, it's gonna be, it's gonna take a while.
Yeah, I I mean, you know, this um this data gets reported, right? And so it is, uh it should be publicly available information. There are similar reports, right? To there are similar reports that other cities are um are are producing. And I think that um you you know, if the deliverable really is just kind of this initial, hey, let's get together, compare, you know, what the numbers are looking like. I I I mean, I I think that's a a very um, you know, productive um way of having a meaningful conversation about uh what makes sense uh, you know, from a discussion-oriented standpoint, where the where the viewpoint is really not so much, you know, um how do we uh how 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 do we evade kind of unfair attacks, right? There the viewpoint becomes more along lines of, yeah, how do we have a productive discussion that's oriented in actual data, you know, compared to how we're how we're really performing? Um so i- it's also not a a wheel-spinning exercise, you know? This data will uh tell us qualitatively how or quantitatively how other jurisdictions are are doing, you know? Um and and we can, you you know, very rightly um put ourselves, you know, within within a context there. Um but you know, when when someone points out twenty twenty data, I just feel like, well, I mean, I mean, who who's going to be entitled in left and right in twenty twenty? I mean, and and in fact, we did, right? I mean, we we had the Westport project. So um you know, it it's it's one of those things where I think if we're looking at kind of a broader base of of jurisdictions, we can w- we can get a a sense of, you know, what the fairness is in in terms of particular assessments and then, you know, take the next steps. Um yeah, I I think we've gotten a a fair amount of uh input from our council. I I'm not really uh sensing an appetite to, you know, put forward a motion for, you know, consolidated direction. I do have another hand up, though, from councilmember Moore at this point. And councilmember Moore, did you want to make a another round of commentary at this at this time?
Yes, I would actually. Um I think that we we might want to have a study session going over the the general plan um commentary that that we got from the the Planning Commission. I know that they, having having done almost two full rounds of going through the general plan, it takes uh many meetings. Um and the the first round was uh extremely thorough and there a lot of uh good comments were put in there. So perhaps we could have a study session to look at them um sequentially because that's how we did it, you know, we'd go through, we we picked how many pages we felt we could, you know, chunk through in a in a night and then set up the next meeting to go through the next set. And it was actually really good for us because we had to read all of the policies and know and know what was in the in the general plan. So it was it was a really good exercise. Um I I think it's very interesting to have this comparative study of the other cities because that way we can find out if there are other cities who are in the same boat that we are, uh where we're we've entitled and things aren't being built. I'm curious about that. And I know we have, we have friendly electeds around us who would who would probably, you know, be willing to assist us to have that docu- that that documentation. And perhaps the Embarcadero interest uh institute is interested in having this information as well. I want to point out, S B thirty-five was mentioned. So between twenty eighteen and assuming that uh a permit is is pulled uh perhaps this year, that we were left vulnerable and we still are left vulnerable to another S B thirty-five project during that whole time. So that's that's at least three years that we're that we're sitting where where another S B thirty-five could have happened simply because the data hadn't, wasn't going to change because no permit had been pulled. And that's, to me, that's kind of an odd loophole that sits in the in the system. Uh going back to the earlier uh item this evening that the county uh had uh was interested in purchasing that Outback site. What's curious there is that they're taking the uh maximum number of units on a site which doesn't have a housing element allocation on it. And they are taking that amount, that density, the twenty-five, and they are, in order to get up to around sixty, they're using what looks like about a fifty percent density bonus. So in essence, they are requesting an S B thirty-five type project from a density standpoint on a site which doesn't have a housing allocation. So there, you might not call that one a an S B thirty-five project, but in essence, it it really is. And um going back to the Valco project, I'm going to say it again. S B thirty-five used a housing law to worsen the housing shortage. And the problem that we are saddled with is that it has so much office that we're now needing to find housing for this housing project. And 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 that we needs to be communicated because we are left with a with a big problem on our hands. Uh and it it's, that that housing law should not be doing that. It should not be allowed to do that to a community. Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember Moore. Are there any other comments from council at this point?
I'm sorry.
Uh well, city manager, do you have a hand up?
I I just wanted to respond to Mr. Willie, too, that I forgot to mention that I had met with the chair of the uh local government, I think it's Local Government Committee at the state level and did tell her about the issues that we were experiencing, not only with S B thirty-five, but also did tell her about um our inability to help people build. That we've entitled everything that we possibly can and we have no control over the build. And that was the fallacy in all of it. So um it has been reported at least at the end of twenty nineteen.
Okay, um so we uh we don't have any more hands up. We do have uh councilmember Willie who just raised his hand. Uh councilmember Willie?
Well, I think this is the appropriate time to make the motion to accept the uh report. If that's okay, then I'll go ahead and say that.
Second?
Well, no, I'll, you know, if that's appropriate. So I motion that the city council receive the general plan annual review report, including the general plan annual housing element progress report. Now.
Second.
Okay, councilmember Willie with uh second from councilmember Moore. And um did you want to include the input that we've provided uh to staff in your motion?
Okay, sorry about that. And provide the the input that we have. Okay, sorry about that, and provide the input that we have given to staff.
Okay. And Councilmember Moore, you are nodding your head. You accept that as second? Okay, great. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I have a question regarding the SB 35 determination. So, with our current report that's submitted now, which category would we qualify under? I think we were, the SB 35 in the past has to be 50% of BMR. And now, but every year, they prorate us, so we are the seventh year of the RENA. So, they probably would compare the units permitted versus seven-eighths of our RENA allocation. Are we underperforming? So, we might be subject to SB 35 with only 10% of BMR units? I'm curious.
It is my understanding that as of June 2019, that's not right. I'm looking that up, but I think we're still eligible under the 50% and not the 10%.
Okay. That's good. Because we build enough market rate housing, right? So, we are still eligible. I mean, so we're in the 50% bracket.
I can look that up and verify that, but I do believe I've seen some documentation in the past that says that we're at the 50%.
Okay.
Right, I mean, and that's precisely why it's good to have more data to see how we perform vis-à-vis the rest of the state, because that's a metric that is comparative. So, a certain percentage of jurisdictions meet that 10% threshold, where the developer need only deliver 10% of the units is affordable in order to invoke the rights of SB 35. So, we do have a motion on the table. Councilmember Wei, you now have your hand up. Did you?
Yeah, just very briefly, because I was pondering Councilmember Moore's comparison to the Outback State could be an SB 35 project equally. So, I did some research. I think it's 1.5 acres, right? And for 25 units times 1.5, I think the density bonus is actually more than 30%. AB, I think 100% affordable housing for AB 1763 is 1.8%. That's why we get 68 units. It's even more than the 50%. It's, you added 100% affordable housing bonus according to AB 1, let me look at my research, 1763 is, you time 25 units times 1.5 times 1.8, that's you get 68 units. So, it's actually more than the SB 35 50% bonus. That's just, yeah. So, I guess 100% unit, 100% affordable housing gets a very nice density bonus.
May I ask a question about that to staff? Would they be able to use, are they using density bonus there? Because then you've got your waivers and your concessions, and how is it that it goes from being a non-housing element site to now having the, being given the right to build housing there? It sounds like that's a general plan amendment. And then, I was also, or, you know, we'll probably need to revisit this because we're going off topic, but it seems to me, yeah, it just, it seems to me that they're looking for a general plan amendment from us, and that the non-residential land use designation for that site is problematic, because the way it reads is that residential is supporting. So, if it's a supporting element, to me, that means that less than 50% of what's there for square footage is residential, which means your non-residential component is more than, is, you know, 51%. So, now you've got your 68 units, say, plus, let's say, those units are thousands, thousand square feet each. So, you've got your 68,000 there, and then you need to have 68,001 for your non-residential component, and you're looking at 70, 140,000.
So, as a reminder to council, there is no project defined for that.
Well, I think that when they come forward, what they're asking for is gonna snowball into something pretty big and needing a general plan amendment. So, and that didn't really get fleshed out while we were having that discussion.
Yeah, it's probably because, it's probably because the projects, there really, there really has not been any discussion about the projects.
Okay, yeah, let's bring this back to, you know, I know the general plan is essentially all-encompassing from a planning perspective, so you could really justify almost any project under this discussion. But let's get back to the report. We have a motion to accept what was provided to us, and I think we've given lots of thoughtful feedback. Hopefully, you know, staff takes this into account and considers it in its totality with regard to what council's interested in following up on. So, Vice Mayor Chow, you do have your hand up. Did you want to give a very brief final thought here?
So, coming back to the housing element report, so for the next housing element, we will be identifying new sites, and the new sites might have new density assigned, which could include the site we are talking about, right? Okay. I see he has nothing, so it's okay.
It would depend on the timing and the steps in the process, yes.
So, it could have become a housing element site.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm speaking to the report. Hugh, did you want to add on the?
Yeah, I can speak to that, yeah. It depends on council direction on whether that gets included as a housing element site or not.
So, when do we, okay, so for the next cycle, when do we start having these discussions specific to 2023 to 2031?
We are starting that kickoff in April.
Oh, okay, so it starts this year?
With the study session, I think I conferred with you on a potential date.
Okay, okay.
That's when it'll kickoff.
I see.
It'll start off with a study session. The thought is that Planning Commission, Housing Commission, and the City Council can do a joint study session on the whole process.
Okay.
And then, there'll be another one programmed in between some other efforts.
I see.
So, at least two.
I hope we finish earlier now, like one month before the deadline this time.
Right. Okay, great. So, how does that work out? Yeah, I mean, we're talking about 2023, right? Yeah, I mean, last time, it kind of coincided with an election cycle, right? So, we're at the end of 2014.
It's end of 2022, we should finish it. Deadline is January 2023.
Right, right.
Palo Alto last time, I see they just made it in September.
All right, so we might have the same issue there. Okay, well, it seems like we're getting a reasonable head start on it. Let us go ahead and vote on the motion on the table after a fulsome discussion on this, which I thank you all for. Madam City Clerk, if you could, please conduct a roll call vote.
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Wei?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, at this point, we are at the end of our numbered items. We have oral communications continued as necessary, which it is not, and finally, we have council and staff comments and future agenda items. And keeping in mind, we did have the opportunity to speak at the beginning of the meeting as well. Would anyone have any future agenda items or comments to share? Let's start with our City Manager with regard to staff comments. Deb, did you have anything?
I have nothing additional, thank you.
Okay, great. So, Councilmember Willie, you have your hand raised. Please feel free.
Yeah, so, future agenda item, so, I, you know, we received an email from the Farmer's Market, and so, I went and talked with the two guys that run that. And currently, that Farmer's Market, they were pushed out of the Oaks. And so, fortunately, they said that the city staff let them move over to Memorial Park February to May. But at the current time, their stay at Memorial Park ends in May, and they're somewhat worried, in fact, or somewhat panicked, that, you know, the virtual background behind me, that is from last weekend. They say they have up to 5,000 people attend their Farmer's Market per week, and to me, that's a huge community event that we need to make sure that doesn't fall apart. So, I'm requesting a agenda item so that we can explore what options there are to keep this in our community and keep it up and running. So, hopefully, I get support for an agenda item.
Okay, Councilmember Willie, City Manager Fang has a comment that appears on this.
So, there's conversations going on with the Farmer's Market and Deansa to move the Farmer's Market to the Deansa parking lot on those times that they are, the Sunday mornings from 9:00 to 9:02, as I think they're here.
So, they discussed that with me. That is not their preference.
What's their preference?
Well, their.
Well, and at this time, I think we should just decide whether we want a report back with additional information or a new agenda item and not have further discussions.
Yeah, I think that's fair. That's fair, City Attorney. So, we're looking at some time sensitivity here. May is when they're out of Memorial Park, is that right?
That's what, that's their current end time, yes.
Okay, you know, let's, let's see what we can do. You know, April's pretty packed right now, but we'll see what we can do on the upcoming month. Fair enough?
Okay.
And so, we have, we have Councilmember Moore followed by Vice Mayor Chow.
Well, I had one more request, and that is, you know, SB 9 and SB 10 are pretty dramatic, would have a pretty dramatic impact. And so, I think we should be having a agenda item to decide if we should be taking a position like other communities are taking a position. And so, again, you know, hopefully, I can get somebody to support so that we can get that as an agenda item. I don't think it'd be a law.
John, we've already opposed. The LRC has opposed SB 9 and SB 10, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, because I sent out those letters recently.
So, we already took an official position, mayors and, with the, by the mayor.
So, we're good there. Okay, thanks, Councilmember Willie. So, we got what you wanted there in lightning speed. All right, Councilmember Moore?
Okay, I was wondering if we could hear a little bit more about Lehigh, and I don't really understand what's going on there. Apparently, they are gearing up to sue the county. There was an article regarding potential sale of assets by the Heidelberg Cement Parent Company. They have been using petroleum coke as their fuel, and I'd like to understand more about that. And also, I've heard something about the potential of importing slag for their material, and that one there really concerned me, because many, many years ago, I went on a field trip to an iron smelting facility, an old one back in New England, and I remember picking up slag off the ground, and it was this really pretty blue color, because it was laden with copper and God knows what else in there. It was really pretty, but not good for the environment. And so, I'm very concerned about all that. If there's some way we can have an update, I think it would be very brief to hear what is going on and what's going on with regards to the county. There was one bit of information that I picked up recently, and that had to do with the environmental screening levels question I've had about imported fill, and it's my belief, from what I read, that the background levels of the area you're bringing imported fill to, because Lehigh's looking to fill in one of the pits, that the background screening levels are what are used. And so, I want to know a little bit more about that. Does that mean background screening levels at that site? Or is it for the region? And it needs to be background screening levels less any man-made materials, so you're not gonna have any gasoline in it, for instance. So, anyway, I'd like to have a little update on Lehigh, if that's possible. If anyone else is interested, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, I think we committed to a quarterly schedule on updates.
We did. We're due to bring it back in May.
Yeah, so.
So, we'll have, okay, so I'm concerned about the comments from Rota Frye from the public, and if there's something new that we need to be moving on, I want to know that rather than waiting until May. So, what I can do is, you know, if we get, if we get an email that has something that time is of the essence, that we don't wait until we're doing these quarterly meetings in order to find out that we're behind on things, okay? So, I'll wait, I'll wait till May, unless we, if we get some information that says we need to put something on the agenda, do it now, we'll do that.
Yeah, we often, staff often interacts with Rota as well, so.
Okay, okay, yeah, because the suing the county part, that really bothered me, and seeing the potential that they're trying to sell assets, it made me wonder, are they trying to sell that location?
Yes, and not to further discuss, sorry, Mr. Mayor, but the lawsuit was based upon the delay on their reclamation permit, from what I understand, and the news to sell. Heidelberg, or the parent company owns several, and we can't find anything that they're gonna sell the one where it's in Cupertino.
Okay, okay, that's good to know. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Chow?
Okay, so, I think one public comment requested a more outreach or wider advertisement of our study session on small cells in April. And I hope that we do send a message, wider message out, and the message should specify how many small cell has been approved since last year or the year before, so that the public has a good knowledge, and then understand that this is something they should pay attention to. And then, they attend the meeting.
Yes, the reason it has not been advertised is the council meeting for that day on April 20th. I will pre-establish it tomorrow after this meeting, and then review it with the mayor the following, so it's coming soon.
Okay, great, and we will have a message out to the community, yeah, great. And then, as I proposed earlier, I hope that we will have, continue to look at how to reduce the light pollution from our own street lights. Because Saratoga has almost no street lights. I actually feel very relaxed walking their street. Not, without light doesn't mean you're scared, especially our community, so we should really consider that. And we can now see stars here, that's really true. And the second is, let's look at how we can encourage existing commercial and schools, churches to reduce their light voluntarily. So, is there any way to do that? That, tell them we have this new standard, and we think about that. And I think they also can consider birth safe treatment for existing windows for commercial and also for residential housing. There are different strings that we can do, and so, if we can do more outreach on that, that'll be. And so if we can do more outreach on that, that would be great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Councilmember Wei, did you have any reports out with contacts now? Okay.
So do I need to get a second for the agenda item?
With regard to what?
On what I propose that we should do.
Oh, for the outreach to the community on the small cells, or?
Light, light, reduce light pollution from our street lights, outreach for commercial schools, churches for reducing light pollution and outreach to residences, for birth safe treatment.
Okay, you know, I think maybe we should, I, I, I think maybe we should look at this once the ordinance is passed, if that's something that makes sense to you as well.
Something that maybe Sustainability Commission could look at.
Yeah, I, I mean, that's, I, I think that's fine. I mean, especially given the fact that we're looking at our work plan and the commission's work plans in a couple of weeks, two weeks from tonight, in fact. So, yeah, I mean, we can put that on the list, you know, to see what makes sense in terms of the overall workload compared to, you know, the rest of the items on, on the various lists for our commissions. So I, I'm fine with that. I mean, if you want to consider it in that upcoming work plan session. Okay?
Yeah, just add to the list. We'll prioritize, yeah.
Great, okay. Okay, so Councilmember Wei, you didn't have anything. Councilmember Moore, your hand is back up. But, well, why don't you go? Did you have a follow-up item that you wanted to?
Yes, there was something that, that I was concerned about. I took the survey for the Sunday field use, and had, one of my sons also took it, and we both felt that it was, had leading questions, and that we've had that, that issue come up with our surveys more than once. And I, I felt that it was leading in the sense that you couldn't flat out say no, that you did not want to give up Sunday field use without having the next question be, so, you know, when on Sunday? What times are you comfortable with giving up? It's like, but I wasn't. So I, and I felt that that was kind of, that's truly a leading question because it's almost like the conclusion's already baked into the, the survey. So I, I have a problem with that. I don't know if anyone else has taken the time to go through that survey and look at it. And when you're taking the survey, you're not informed the residency of the individuals who are wanting to use the field use, the percentage of Cupertino residents. You don't know that, so you might think that it's all Cupertino residents, and they want to play on the fields, and that, that's good, without having full knowledge about what, what's really going on there. So I, I'm very concerned about what kind of data that we're going to get from this and whether or not there's any control over, over these being Cupertino residents, or are we looking at people who have kids in the leagues here, but they live all over? And as you know, I was pretty involved in the soccer, in the soccer leagues all over, so I've got some pretty good information about it.
Yeah, let's, let's push that to the work plan discussion as well. I, I noticed that Joanne, Joanne was here, our Director of the Recreation Community Services Department earlier, but I don't see her name here.
I can, I can make a few comments for Councilmember Moore.
Yeah, just from a process perspective, City Manager, just.
Yes, so this was a 19.
Sitting at this point.
So the City Council, back in the 1920 timeframe for the work program, specifically requested staff to work on expanding the field use policies throughout the city. There is a way to say you do not favor Sunday, Sunday use by organized groups. It is embedded on purpose. I believe I wrote an email to you that had how it was developed and why. And then additionally, there is a requirement, if there's a team or organization that is going to use our fields, they have to be at least 51% Cupertino residents. But I'm sure Joanne can talk about it more, so we can.
So where does this sit right now? Is that, is that being conducted by Recreation Community Services?
Correct, that's, yes, correct.
Is the Parks and Rec Commission involved at all in it at this point?
I, I'm pretty sure they had involvement. I, I would have to defer to Joanne to answer that question.
Okay, yeah, maybe, so, okay, well, let me, let me close with this, since I guess I'm the last person. We do have this fairly important session coming up on the 30th, and I'm really glad that we're having it with the work plan items, not just for council, but for various commissions and the Audit Committee coming up in two weeks from today, as I stated before. Are we having the department heads there as well, City Manager Fang?
Absolutely.
In terms of that discussion? Okay, great. So, okay, I guess we'll look forward to that. That's not a regularly scheduled meeting. However, March does have five Tuesdays, and so we are taking advantage of that, of that last Tuesday in March to talk about our work plan item. And so, oh, wonderful, we've got a couple more hands up. So briefly, Vice Mayor Chow and Councilmember Willie. Vice Mayor Chow.
Oh, I think my hand wasn't down.
Oh, okay, you're going to take it down, great. So Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, so this is just a quick one. So that work plan, on night, I, I would ask that our city manager give us advance, not direction, but explain how she's going to run that. You know, I've had discussion with her before, how Tim Borden did it, and then he ranked them. And in the meeting with the, with Deborah, she said, well, she has this idea of giving everybody five, five dots for their ones to help her rank them. I, I would hope we get the ground rules before the night that we do it.
I promise you will, promise, and you will have handouts and everything. Promise, promise.
Great, thank you.
Okay, great. All right, so with that, if anyone can tell me what the first Tuesday in April is, and if not, I'll just adjourn it to that, that, that date.
April 5th, April 6th.
April 6th, great. So we are adjourned for our March 16 regular meeting of the Cupertino City Council. We'll see you on April 6th. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.